Oh, I was like, are we supposed to be doing more?
Because I'm refusing to mute. Of course, Keith can just mute.
Stacy, go ahead.
All right, good evening. It is 6:31. I am calling this special school committee April 7th, 2020 meeting to order. I need to read the governor's statement pursuant to the governor's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Paragraph 20, as well as the Select Board's emergency order dated March 16th, 2020. The Holliston School Committee will be using remote participation for this meeting. The audio of this meeting is being recorded and will be posted to the HCAT webpage within 24 hours in accordance with the governor's emergency action requirement of keeping the public informed of actions during this meeting. I ask that all participants remotely attending this meeting, please state your name for identification purposes each time you speak throughout the meeting. At this time, we'll do a roll call attendance. Mrs. Listevnik?
Present.
Ms. Naborsky?
Present.
Ms. Shaughnessy?
Here.
Mrs. Handstead?
Present.
Ms. Koshin?
Present.
Mr. Morton?
Present.
At this time, I'll take a, I will entertain a motion to approve remote participation.
Mrs. Raffey's present?
Yes.
So, oh, sorry, Mrs. Raffey, present. God, sorry. Okay, so moved by Dawn, seconded by Cynthia. Roll call, vote, Mrs. Listevnik?
Yes.
Ms. Naborsky?
Yes.
Ms. Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Mrs. Handstead?
Yes.
Ms. Koshin?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Mrs. Raffey, yes. All right, so Dr. Jackson sent a memo regarding a discussion that we're going to have this evening about potential changes to the 2019-2020 school committee calendar. Brad? Go ahead.
Good evening, everyone. Included in your electronic packet is a memo from me, a copy of our current district calendar, and a copy of an on-the-desks top announcement from Commissioner Riley, all of which are provided in support of my recommendation to have the school committee vote to modify the 2019-2020 school calendar to change the dates of April 21st, April 22nd, April 23rd, and April 24th to, from school vacation days to remote learning days. The result of this vote would be to change the last day of school for the 2019-2020 school year from its current place, which is Wednesday, June 24th, 2020, and it would move it closer by four days. The result would be that our last day of school would be Thursday, June 18th, 2020, should the school committee vote to modify the calendar per my recommendation. This is due to one snow day that I did call in early December 2019. I make this recommendation based on a number of different factors, the most significant of which is that our state and our community will be and is currently under lockdown and shutdown as ordered by the governor, with the stay-at-home order in place for all staff and all students. So the traditional use of April school vacation is not, is not possible for families, both our, both our staff, family, staff members and students. We also are just rolling out Phase 2 of our remote learning plan. We're actually just in Day 2 right now, and we feel that we will be at a point where we are really getting the community and getting ourselves into a routine around this new remote learning plan and feel that, I personally feel that ending or having basically a week to 10-day break in remote learning would be detrimental both to the learning process itself at this point in time as well as to the momentum we're building. The third benefit that I actually think is noteworthy is that this actually would allow us to begin the Term 4 at the high school on that Tuesday, April 21st, which would allow an extra week for Term 4 for our senior class, actually for all of our, not, it wouldn't be for all of our students because students in grades K through 11 will have their end-of-year move back closer by four days, but the seniors would actually get four additional days of Term 4, which was an issue that several on the committee had expressed, found noteworthy the last time we met. And should we be called back in session, this would, this, the date of, the final date of, of June 18th would stand whether we return to regular days or we continue through remote learning days for the entire rest of the school year as ordered by the governor or as ordered locally. And should, however, should we return, we've all have expressed concern one way or another with the quality of in-school days in late, mid and late June, given the fact that all of our instructional spaces are predominantly, all of our instructional spaces are not air-conditioned. I have been in touch with the Federation, the Holliston Federation of Teachers. Ms. Cottone and I began a conversation about this very subject actually almost three weeks ago when I introduced it to her, and she has allowed me to include the following statement on behalf of the Federation. Quote, "The HFT supports the superintendent's recommendation to the school committee to continue remote learning April 21st through 24th, moving the last day of school from June 24th, 2020, to June 18th, 2020." Furthermore, I emailed our entire staff on Sunday notifying them that this was going to be my recommendation and that I would welcome their feedback, either primarily it was had I, had I forgotten something or if they had a reason why they thought it would not be a proper recommendation for me to make. I received somewhere between 12 and 15 email responses, of which one expressed concern. It is a concern that, that is a concern that I had considered and that being the fact that we, many of our teachers and some of our, many slash some of our students are, could at some level use a break. My reasoning about that basically has been that what would that break entail if they are indeed at home and not able to do many of the things that one traditionally does during a school break? So for those reasons, it is my recommendation that the school committee modify the 2019-2020 school calendar to change the dates of April 21, 22, 23, and 24 from school vacation days to remote learning days.
All right, I'm going to go around the blocks. Any questions?
So I was wondering, thank you for that, Brad. I'm wondering whether the, if there any impact financially with HFT endorsing this plan for us to move forward going through April vacation rather than having the break?
So technically, this is a change in working conditions. While the school committee can and does have the authority to modify the school calendar, this would entail a change in working conditions, which is why I approached the Federation in advance to give them voice prior to this. The fact of the matter is that this will not alter their work year at all. They will continue to work 185 days. They were either going to work 185 days through June, through the June 24th, but because they'll be working, if you accept my recommendation, because they'll be working April 21st, 22nd, 23rd, and 24th, which were not days that we counted towards 185, that's where the wash is. So this, the community will continue to get the, all the workdays that we have, that we have contracted for from all, from all of our employees. The reason, and that's one of the reasons why we're not, I'm not recommending a Monday opening because that is a state holiday, and some of our employees, particularly all of our full-year employees, do have that as a unpaid holiday, as a, excuse me, as a paid holiday. Did that answer your question?
And Louise?
Cynthia asked my first question, so thank you. That was a good one, and thanks for the answer. I just wanted to say thank you for your thoughtful and thorough review of this because it, I know it's complicated and multifaceted, and I think you looked into all the right channels, and I also just wanted to give a shout out to the HFT because this is a change in working conditions and the degree to which they're willing and able to step up to, to help, to help do it. I think on balance, they're probably more pros than cons. Tricky situation, but I just wanted to thank everybody involved because I think it's, I think it's the right thing to do, but I think it's a, you know, not an easy decision. So thank you.
Brad, could you just very quickly confirm the, the dates at the high school, the end of Term 3, the end of Term 4, the end of Term for seniors, and the last day of school? Just so we can get the, I just want to consolidate the dates.
All right, can somebody follow along with me and make sure I do this right? The end of Term 3 will be, and regardless of this vote, will be Friday, April 17th. The last day of, and then Term 4 will begin either Monday, excuse me, Tuesday, April 21st, if the school committee approves this vote, or alternatively, it will begin on Monday, April 27th, if we remain in school vacation. The last day for seniors, which will not change regardless of this vote, is, is and will be May 29th. If the school committee does not change the school calendar, the last day for students K through 11 will be June 24th. If the school committee does make this vote, the last day of school for students grades K through 11 will be June 18th.
And can you just confirm, just as, for posterity's sake, that there will not be, traditionally, there's an exam period at the end of a semester, that there will not be exams this year at the high school and at the middle school?
The remote learning plan that we presented last week explicitly stated that there would be no final exams for the high school at the end of Term 3, at the end of Term 4, or at the end of Semester 2. I didn't explicitly state that at the, regarding the middle school, but that is indeed also correct, and there will be no final exams regardless of whether we return to school on May 4th or a subsequent later date. We have to remember, we are, continue to plan for the potential of return to school at the earliest on Monday, May 4th, and we have no indication yet as to whether the governor is, is considering extending that, no official indication of that. And, but I think most school committees and superintendents are working under the assumption that that, that some sort of extension is, you know, has, you know, I don't want to say it's likely, but has a, has a, has a good probability that there may be a further extension. Whether or not it's going to be an extension for the whole year, I think, I think people are less confident in their predictions.
And it's your intention to follow the state guidance?
The state, unless and until the state guidance is lifted, the decision is not in the hands of the superintendent of schools, it is in the hands of the governor. If and when the governor lifts the statewide closure, then that decision reverts back to the local level of all cities and towns to make their own individual determination by the superintendent. That is the, and, and that would be, that decision would be made based on local conditions after consultation with local authorities.
Okay, thank you. One more question related to the calendar, but not as it relates to April vacation, so I'll hold that until the end.
Angie, did you have a question? Were there any other further questions about April vacation? All right, Joan, do you want to ask your other question?
My other question is, we've been getting some questions about the discussions relating to, and I'm not sure if this is a question for Brad or for Ann-Louise, quite frankly, relating to prom and graduation. Is there, do we have, do we even have a date by which we might make a determination? I'm expecting this to be no, but we're, I said I would ask the question.
So before we end that discussion, let's move, let's vote on the calendar first, and then we can close with that, okay? So is, all right, is there a motion to approve the changes to the 2019-2020 school year calendar whereby April 21st, 22nd, 23rd, and 24th will be remote learning days, and the last day of school will be Thursday, June 18th, 2020? Moved by Dawn? Seconded by Cynthia? Sorry. Moved by Dawn, seconded by Ann-Louise. Roll call, vote, Mrs. Listevnik?
Yes.
Ms. Naborsky?
Yes.
Ms. Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Ms. Handstead?
Yes.
Ms. Koshin?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Mrs. Raffey, yes. Okay, so Brad, if you, you and Ann-Louise want to take on the?
Well, first, I just want to clarify a couple of things. Hopefully, this will be a relief to you, Brad. Prom is a school-sponsored event. My only interest in this was that it, there are a host of senior events, some of which are school-sponsored, some of which are not, and those that are not are decisions that the class officers with the advice of their advisors and input from the class parents are involved in. And just so everyone's clear, those two events are baccalaureate and the all-night graduation party. Having said that, as you can imagine, we're on the receiving end of many, many questions regarding what about prom, et cetera, et cetera, because no one else really cares about that distinction. But it's 100% in Brad's and Nicole's hands on how to handle prom. The only concern that we have is that when you look at the calendar of senior events, some of them require significant advanced planning, and there's a lot of money tied up in these events. And so we are trying to be forward planning, forward thinking, and plan ahead to avoid any loss of funds around these events. But the safety of our students is obviously paramount. So just for clarification, I just want you to understand my role in that.
Thank you. I, these are two highly complicated and highly emotional issues and decisions that are, that we are not ready to, to finalize. There is way too much, way too many unknowns at this point in time. I know that Ms. Bottomley has been in touch with the class parents, and I know she's been in touch with the class officers on several occasions. I know she's meeting tomorrow virtually with the class officers and the, the senior advisors to continue the conversation, particularly about prom. Graduation, while Keith probably would, will have a heart attack when I say this, and our friends at HCAT will have a heart attack when I say this, graduation is not as complicated, I would argue. Sorry, that's why we have cable access, and it may be difficult for families to get there if we make a decision, but that decision to me is not, on the timeline, is not, is not the most critical. The critical one is the, the prom and the events that are associated with it. There are a number of school, well, actually, most of the schools in the area are in the same boat. The principals are, are spending a lot of time together brainstorming ideas about timelines and venues and sharing venues and trading venues and all sorts of things to try to piece something together. At this point in time, the goal is to have some indication as to where we're going, probably by the end of next week, and, and that may not be a final decision, but it'll probably, I would assume it's going to be a much narrower decision tree. If X, then Y, if B, then Z, and, or if this, then we're going to have to rethink all options. So.
The end of next week, you're saying it might, it might come further into focus?
Yes.
Thank you.
I will say, I mean, Nicole, first of all, she had to get through the week of simply planning the remote learning piece, like that was a priority, so I don't think she's really had an opportunity to dig deep on these specific events until this week. So I know she's meeting with the class officers and advisors tomorrow. We have traded a few emails, and she said that they're contemplating a number of different scenarios, which Brad alluded to, and I shared some thoughts with her on, you know, things to kind of take into account as they're doing that. But the one question that I have for you, Brad, and this isn't a scenario per se, it's simply a possible outcome, but if graduation stays put, because it's later in the calendar and the world starts to look rosy by the weekend of June 6, 7, and yet in the meantime, there's a decision made about prom to either postpone it, delay it, or what have you, is there a possibility prom can occur after graduation? And let me just clarify what I'm asking. Is that even an option to have a non, to have a school-sponsored event where, let's say it occurred after graduation, and half the kids going are no longer students? Like, how does that play out in terms of our actual liability for those students boarding buses, taking care of them, et cetera, et cetera? Like, how does that work?
So I haven't pondered that possibility. I can, my initial reaction to that is that we do have students who are attending our events, our proms, who are not students of ours, and they have to sign contracts and social contracts and are, and are, and are, you know, held accountable. The challenge would obviously be that the, the outcome or the, what's the word I'm looking for? The, the threat, if you will, for misbehavior is a lot more, a lot more shallow after graduation than it is before, and that would, that would obviously be some level of concern. We, we also have to remember this is a junior-senior prom, and.
Yeah, I know, I know, just.
And I just, just, I know you know, but just for those who are listening, this is a junior-senior prom, and we would have to, you know, we obviously would maintain, we have some of our, there will be some of our students. So I actually haven't thought that out other than my kind of blathering here, but it would be something that we'd have to talk to school council about as we, before we could consider that option.
It might be worth shooting a quick email to Andy Wa so that Nicole has that information in hand possibly when she meets with the students and advisors because it's, it's obviously an unusual scenario, and yes, I know the kids who aren't part of the district signed the social contract, and we would just now have a lot more social contracts to get signed, and it can be done. Not worried about that, but it's just a consideration because I want to make sure we understood what the options were.
There's, there's two issues, whether it's legal and whether it's advisable. Advisable is a much different story.
Yeah, yeah.
It's the accountability piece that, as I process this, is, is, you know, something that we'd have to really dig deep on.
I need to interrupt for a minute. We only have one minute left before HCAT has to go off the air because they are taking, they're videoing another session, and we only have the one.
It's a different channel.
All right, well, regardless, it was one agenda item, so I don't want to get too far off topic and get in trouble, so.
I don't either. I just wanted, now you made me lose my train of, there was just one last point on that. Just give me a second, Stacy. It was important.
Okay, but since this isn't on the agenda, is this something you guys could take up offline?
Maybe it was, it was relevant to everyone, but okay.
All right, so with that being said, our next meeting is April 16th. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Oh, I know what it was, sorry. It's, you can do it after, but it was, it is related to the change in the schedule, and I just thought it was worth bringing up because I got the inquiry from several parents. They're confused just about what's being graded, what's not, and how second semester grades are working. So I know you talked about final exams, but can you just, for the benefit of anyone watching this, Brad, just repeat what the grading policy will be for any courses that began on, like whatever second semester was, January 27th or February 1st or something?
I'm going to do this from memory, if, if the board will indulge me a minute. Students who are in a Term 3-only course or a course that ends in Term 3, which would be a course that goes Terms 1, 2, and 3, their Term 3 and the grade will be determined based on their work through March 12th, which was the day we closed, and, thanks, Peter, and, and they will, and they will be given the opportunity to make up missed work, and they will be given at the discretion of the teacher, the opportunity to make up other work to improve their grade, that's a teacher discretion. Students who are, students who are taking a course for Term 4 only will be receiving credit. credit or no credit. Students who are taking courses that are for the semester, which is Terms Three and Four, will be receiving credit or no credit.
Okay, that was the question. The, the question was, why aren't, for kids who are in a Term Three, Four semester-based class, if they were in it for five weeks, whatever was submitted and graded, why would that not count? That was the question.
Our, our, our plan was that that was an insufficient, that was insufficiently, an insufficient amount of work to earn a final course grade for.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Sorry.
Moved by Cynthia.
Seconded by Ann...
That's the motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Do I understand that to be...
Seconded by Ann-Louise, sorry.
Moved by Cynthia, seconded by Ann-Louise. Roll call vote, Ms., Mrs. Listevnik?
Yes.
Ms. Borski?
Yes.
Ms. Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Ms. Hansdahl?
Yes.
Ms. Koshen?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Mrs. Raffey, it is 7:02. This meeting is now adjourned for all who will be celebrating Passover and Easter. Best wishes to you and your family. Thank you all, good night, and we'll see you on the 16th.
Stay safe, everybody.